They want to please stand for prayer. Our dear gracious heavenly father, we want to come to you and thank you so much for allowing us to come to this place, Lord, that we can conduct business in a manner that we're pleasing in your sight. And, Lord, we want to ask your blessing on this meeting. Everything we do, we want to include you with it. Because you love us, you take care of us, Lord, and you're there in all things. We just pray that a lot of people still without power in North Carolina and Georgia. And we got a storm, another storm coming in Florida, Lord. She pickers, uh, pickers, uh, ones in Florida. And to just watch over them, protect them. Now, Lord, we just ask that we go through this meeting, that you'll give us wisdom and knowledge beyond our measure that's yours. And, Lord, we're thanking again for each tradition, everyone here tonight. And we love you, praise you, forgive us of our sins, in Christ's name we pray, amen.
All right, under unfinished business number one, we have the approval of the September twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four regular scheduled board meeting. Commissioner Cersey, any errors or omissions in those minutes?
No, sir.
Commissioner Patterson?
I have none, Chairman, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes and ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Ah.
All right, under new business, we have a board discussion, actually, we have a marriage request from Mr. and Ms. Bobo to build a detached garage eight feet from the property line. This request includes a letter from a neighbor approving that sale back. Is there anybody here that opposes this marriage request?
I'm home.
Okay, she's here, okay. The gentleman might took a look at the area and didn't see an issue with it, also with a letter from the neighbor. I think that's always a plus to try to get when we're doing something. It's such another property, so. Commissioner Cersey, any concerns or anything on this?
No, sir, I will have it going forward.
Commissioner Patterson?
I have none, Chairman, thank you.
All right, that being said, I'll make a motion to approve this marriage request and I'll ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor? Number two, we have our UGA extension county coordinator, four H agent, Kate Phillips.
Hello, everyone, so I just wanted to come here tonight. We have a new ag agent in the county, finally. She started on October first, and her name is Anna Bass. And she has recently graduated from the University of Georgia with a master's degree in plant pathology. Um, so she is a split position between here and Gilmore County. So she'll spend about two days a week up here and about three days a week down in Gilmore County. So we are very excited.
Well, what, a reverse thing?
What?
Are you three here too?
We'd have to renegotiate the contract.
Give us a little idea of what you'll be doing, you'll be going to the schools?
That is my job, yes. I'm the one that goes into the schools.
I thought you might double team it or something. All right, give us a little more detail.
Yeah, so I can really help with anyone that has any problems with, or questions about soil tests, water tests. I can help commercial growers, homeowners if they have any questions about things that they're growing, their water, their soil. Just really offering guidance to people and just offering that reliable information.
How about trees and plants?
I can help with that, yes, sir. Yes, yeah, I have a lot of experience with trees and plants, so hopefully, hopefully that would be a good area. I'm excited.
We've already had people start calling the office asking for it, so. We're very excited over the extension office, so.
It takes a little wind up your shoulders too, don't it?
It does, because we were gone, we were without an agent for about a year, so, but we waited.
You live in El Jefe or Gilmore or Spanish?
I live in Gilmore County, but really not far at all from Fannin County.
It's about halfway between the two.
Yeah, it's really nice.
Well, you know you were El Loa Spanish better.
That's what I heard.
Well, we're, we're gonna welcome you anywhere, we're thankful to have you.
I'm very pleased to be here, thank you, guys.
If you need anything from any of us, just give us a holler, we're happy on any way we can.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you all.
All right, number three, we have a resolution of a performance of Phyllis Matthews to the Fannin County Tax Assessor Board. Gentlemen, Ms. Matthews has served one term with us so far. Commissioner Cersey, that is your performance, I believe, to begin with. And we actually reached out to Ms. Matthews and wanted to understand, she didn't deny.
What, they stopped by her, I mean?
No, denied coming back to work.
Oh, yes.
So, I think she's in, but any, anything on Ms. Matthews?
I would like to suggest we reappoint her, make a motion to reappoint her.
All right, well, here's what I'll do, I'll ask for that motion to reappoint Phyllis Matthews to the Fannin County Tax Assessor Board. I'll ask for that motion.
Make a motion.
I'll ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Ah. It's hard to get people to serve on some of these.
And now that she's got experience.
Yes, well, she's an educator too.
Right.
So, she's in your field.
High school, right?
No, she was educator, was that Bay County, is that Mike? That Mike, and they moved her.
I think she does a good job, and she's a, she's a good voice of reason on this board.
And she, she Bay County.
Yeah.
I think they showed them if you could.
Yeah, they did. So, thankful for that. Three more places.
You got a little aside there.
There's one or two more on that one. Thought it was a cardinal favorite, didn't it?
Yeah. Make sure that everything taken care of.
That's it.
Line her up. Good.
Yep.
Lock her up.
All right, that brings us down to public commentary. If you've got anything you'd like to say, come on up, basically, tell us who you are and where you're from, and we'll go from there.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you. Chairman, I'm Bob Lorwood, we've spoken on the phone a couple of times. I represent the Blue Ridge Mountain Tribe Unlimited Chapter here in Blue Ridge. I'm also the event coordinator of the Blue Ridge Tribe and Outdoor Adventures Festival, which we're moving toward our eighth annual event. Been very successful. And that brings me here after a conversation with you, Mr. Hensley, on the phone, where your words were, "Don't see why it couldn't be." And that has to do with a project that we'd like to embrace in this community to improve the river access site on North River Road just downstream from Kurt's Switch Road. That's a TVA property there, and by an agreement, I think that was signed in the mid-eighties, the county has maintenance and operation hand on that facility. I've spoken with you, Mr. Hensley, about that, I've spoken with TVA briefly about it as well. They sent me back to the county here because of the relationship. And what we would like to do is reach out to the county and begin the process of an improvement project there that has basically just at this point in time a vision. And that vision being the improvement of that property to create a pleasing, attractive, serviceable spot on the river, midway point, if you will, between Blue Ridge and Mckaysville, where there is no such park side setting at this point in time. Now, what we want to do too is, we want as a chapter, take this on as a community project and stand at the forefront of the vision of this and maybe eventually find our role as a coordinator in it with a number of resources. We're prepared, Tribe Fest itself has raised over a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in the seven years of operating. We've got a substantial amount of that money still sitting in our coffers that's not been distributed out beyond the programs that the chapter is associated with. So we're prepared to use a large portion of that and direct the next years and perhaps the next two more years, depending on the length duration of this project, towards some of the funding, whatever that might be in that project. We'd also like to provide, you know, some coordination on bringing the community stakeholders together and directing, you know, perhaps the vision and the, not necessarily the implementation, it's obviously going to be a county project, but we would like to be involved at a very high level of helping bring this project forward. That's, that's the gist of it, really, at this point in time, I'm not trying to carry on too long here, but the one request I've got that I would like to share or ask of you all, and let me, if I cannot bring these forward?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
So, we're at a point with the Tribe Festival right now where we begin our, our efforts to attract sponsorships. That's a large portion of our budget. And in so doing, as the event coordinator, I'm the monetization guy at that event. And my sponsors program is, is a broad program that has a lot of opportunity for people, for organizations, individuals at all different levels, everything from in-kind services to relatively large sums of money to donate to the program. But what I want to do this year is, is use this project vision as part of the attraction to be a sponsor and use that in this community and reaching out beyond Blue Ridge and Fannin County, because we do bring in some services from other places. So I'd like to bring your attention to just a couple of paragraphs in this. This is a marketing program, so it's written very much like a marketing program. But in the second paragraph on page two, I'm sorry, page three, I'm sorry, third paragraph, page one, I forgot that. That, that paragraph reads, "In principle, the project directs improvements of the public access site to the Lower Tocco River on North River Road, located quarter mile downstream from the river bridge Kurt's Switch Road near Mineral Bluff." The vision, and this is what I'm asking you to pay attention to, "The vision draws river stakeholders of all kinds together to join resources to complete project improvements that include expanded public use areas across the four to five acre tract of land that now only holds a worn, narrow dirt approach to a boat ramp at a hundred and fifty feet of river." That's the vision in a very broad sense. On page two, the one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, for lack of a, of another name for this project, I've named it the Lower Tocco River Public Access Improvement Project. And this is what I'm looking for, is an agreement in principle between Tribe Unlimited, the local chapter, Fannin County, and Tennessee, Tennessee Valley Authority. And this would be an agreement in principle to move forward on investigating, discovery, whatever those first baby steps are in this project. TVA owns the land, you guys operate and maintain it. We would like to lead or at least stand in the forefront of leading the funding resource initiatives because we think we've got a pretty good handle on the stakeholders in this, in this area with our relationship with Tribe Unlimited National, with our relationship in the community at large, and the Tribe Festival itself. And we're a bunch of dang fishermen, so, you know, but this is not just a fishing bank at all. This is, you know, the river's used by any number of different recreational enthusiasts, and we would like to see this project move forward in order to benefit all.
So, would they be fees, excuse me, would they be fees for people?
No, sir. However, the county would nor, would normally operate a county park, that's the way I see it being used.
Because we don't, we don't charge.
No, this is, this is, there's no fees whatsoever, do we see a fee basis on this. I don't know if you, if in, if in Mckaysville or where you then park, the pavilion use or anything like that, or there's.
That's different, that's.
Okay, so, so this vision, we, we have very minor drawing, just a hand sketch of a few things of what we thought about might go into this. But at the very minimum, we're looking at a paved approach, a paved parking lot, perhaps a bathroom facility, and a turnaround so that cars can get in there, drop their, push their boats off, get out, and do it efficiently and safely. And that is another factor in this, is the river safety. We met with your department heads this morning and talked a lot about these items on kind of a case, one by one basis. And Patrick Cook, I think is his name, he, he expressed his interest in, you know, having a mid-river access point that emergency services, if they had to get on the river, they would have a very reasonable place to do it at. There's a lot of hurdles, I'm sure, but I, what I've been looking for is for y'all to spend your time, however you do that, look at those two paragraphs and give us, give us a read on how that, you know, how you feel about that. If we can, if we can call ourselves partners in this regard and come and be in agreement in principle of the vision of the project, that's all I need right now to move ahead with my sponsors program. And I'm at that point in time with that festival that I need to start moving. So that's what I'm asking for.
What we'll do is we'll take a look at that and make it, seek the scope of that work, and we'll try to follow up as soon as we can.
Okay, that'd be great.
Maybe we can consult with Mr. Dals here.
Sure, sure, and I would like to offer this as kind of a handshake, is what we've done here. This is just a draft, it certainly can be changed by any number of ways, but it's, it's something we've come up with, just to try to say what we'd like to do with y'all and, and just, you know, at back, you know, have some kind of an arrangement that we can refer back to and say, "Yeah, we're officially communicating, we're officially connected in this project."
Got you.
Okay?
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? All right.
Well, can we say something?
Yeah, before we go to public commentary, what's your opinion, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted you to take, take a minute, you know, and just let the people know what thing in county has been going on, what we've done to, as a, as a county, and how good our citizens have been about helping our neighbor estates. Give a little update of, if you don't mind, the.
I don't mind it, you know, first of all, we do live in, in my county, we live in the best community we could ever live in. And as, as we all know, Hurricane Helene took its toll on the folks from the, the east to the north of us. And I think, trying to kind of help with this, but I think about one o'clock in the morning is when that storm took a little turn to the right. Had that not happened, that was coming right over top of us. We zoomed in on either storm and it was coming right over us. And we were semi-prepared, I guess we could say as prepared as we could be here in Fannin County for what was about to come. We had all hands on deck in every compartment that we had, and we had some of our volunteers here had, had staged equipment at different locations in case we need that. This is our citizens here in Fannin County that had done that, give us numbers and everything in case we needed, left keys in it in case we couldn't get in touch with somebody. Do what you need to do. And when the folks woke up next morning, it had missed us, but the folks up in the North Carolina, Tennessee area took the brunt of that, and they didn't know it until they woke up. I think the place we were at Sunday, they said the first call started coming in around five, five-thirty about flooding. So that's when, when they actually knew that it had hit. And I'm sure everybody's seen it on social media and things like that, the news, but I tell you, you just, you've been there and saw it. It's, you can't really understand and comprehend what has really happened to those communities up there. So, Fannin County and our citizens, I'm telling you, they stepped up immediately. We sent a crew up there, the first crew, went up there, what, Sunday?
Sunday.
Monday, we had stuff forwarded, and we worked pretty much nonstop all week to load up trailers. And I think as of yesterday, if I'm not mistaken, we had taken fifteen big trailer loads of supplies to badly needed areas.
And we were one of the first to respond?
Yeah, I, we had Tuesday, went back up there again, and we had been to places that they haven't seen or heard of anybody. So, you know, we're, we're very thankful to be able to help. I don't know what they would have done without some of us here, you know. So, we continue to offer help, and we continue to try to get things coming. Those folks, it's not just a, a week and a half, I mean, they're gonna need help for weeks to come. So we, we're gonna try to do the best we can here in Fannin County to help them. And because I feel that if the same would have happened to us, they'd be here.
Yeah.
You know, and just, gosh, a lot of people's hungry up there. And just to. Just to hear the gratitude for them. Over a bottle of water. If that don't humbly, that's something wrong. We take for granted every day, over a bottle of water. And you get a little kid come up and say, "Sure, I am hungry." One of our deputies, sitting there eating the same as it may. A kid come out of nowhere and said, "Sir, I sure am hungry." And just to see that, to hear it, I'll do everything I can to help. And I know the citizens here, they kind of do the same. And I'm sorry to get choked up about it, but until you've seen it. And, and just seeing the gratitude from the people up there, it's just amazing, it really is. Not rapping about anything, and their willingness to help. Well, the chainsaws going out there, what do you need me to do?
We even had, when that, when they thought the storm was coming this way, the mountain people, they called to add.
Oh, yeah.
Backhoes and saws and.
Amazing.
I mean, that was just, it was just overwhelming, I mean.
It's just, but these people like us, in, in the event of something, we're gonna bounce back, and they will too.
Oh, yeah.
But I would ask you to pray for all of our surrounding area, from Florida, South Carolina, North Carolina, Tennessee, that's been affected, even south into Virginia.
Yeah.
Just continue to pray for them, that they'll get back to some kind of normal soon. And, and they will bounce back, just listen to them, they're so resilient, and, and they will make it, they will make it. But we thank it from the bottom of our hearts for everybody who has stepped up during this time to help these folks out. It's a.
It's a test, man.
Like I said, it's a humbling experience to me. I won't take anything for granted anymore, but it's, it's very humble.
I didn't mean it's.
Oh, I know.
But I was, I was gonna take, know what, what we do here, I mean.
Yeah, Fannin County's a special place.
Yeah, it is.
I don't care what anybody says, so.
That's all I have.
Thanks. Sorry, not sorry, I was there. How about you guys, you got anything else?
Said that, said it all.
Yeah.
Just have to help one another, what I'm here for.
That's fair. That being said, if nobody's got anything to say, I'll close the public commentary. So that brings us down to executive session.
I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you raise your hand.
Well, all the power's out and all the lights are gone, it took me thirty-five minutes to get from Ingalls to here.
Oh, that's long, dude.
No, it's not.
There you go.
Really.
Well, you go right ahead, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah, I thought it'd be out here too, anyway, anyways, I'm Larry Sappu, and first off, what y'all were just talking about, I just got back from Ashford myself, and it's unbelievable. And I talked to you, Jamie, yesterday. It's just unbelievable what, what's happened to those people. I will say this, I got behind a caravan of about forty-five female trailers that are on their way up there on the back roads, which isn't good, but some of the roads is open. And then there's all kinds of distribution. The peoples come together and really helping them out, and it's really encouraging on that. But the devastation is just unreal. I mean, it's, you can't imagine for us here, if that would have hit us. I mean, these poor people live in trailers that live by these little creeks, they're a foot deep, and all of a sudden they're thirty foot deep. Them trailers are down in a hollow somewhere where they don't, the people are inside of them, they're just now found. Anyways, what I come for was, first off, I commented to Jamie yesterday, I just wanted to say, y'all doing a real good job managing our funds here, and I appreciate that, all three of y'all. I mean, you're in to do, and it needs to be recognized more than it is. I will, I mean, we've got a nice, we've got money in the bank, and yet we're taking care of everything. We're getting some new stuff with the federal stuff and splotch and everything else. Now, I also want to thank, I mentioned to the road guys, I mentioned to you about, about Double Head Gap Road, they got paved on the guns. I drive, I drive that road a lot, and it's been very hazardous more than once. And it's, it's still skinny, but at least it's, you're not dodging the holes in vehicles. And my, my third thing is, the county's doing real well, and we're getting a lot, our county depends on tourism. What can we do to help, like, get maybe some bike lanes on Aska? And some extra parking at these facilities, I mean, these natural resources that we have that are in our county? Is that through the commission, or is that the parks and then comes back to the commission, how do we do that?
So if we were gonna do, what we would do is like, I'm just speaking, but I believe, believe we're on this. So if we were gonna do a bike lane of Aska, for instance, what we would do is we would see if there's any maybe recreational grants or anything like that would help us along, I think that alone was lost.
Because White County's doing it now, and they're getting some of them back roads, and they're utilizing, and they're promoting that, and, you know, and they're getting these, I mean, this past weekend, we had about five hundred people here growing, it's part of it on the road.
So the last four years for us have been trying to get caught up in.
Right.
To the growth that has passed us. And just like you said, we've been trying to get our public works and our public safety, that's been our goal, is to get those up first.
Yeah.
Because you can't do one without the other, you can't serve the people without the other. So. either, so once we get that done, there, there's some other house cleaning that we need to do, then we look at other projects, so.
On that.
And it's not saying that it's not, it's not gonna happen tomorrow.
No, no, I wouldn't expect it to, I mean, you gotta have studies and figure out.
Yeah, there are things that we have on our list to, to do, and we can definitely put that on there.
Does that go through the commission?
It would go through, yes, it's going on Aska, because it's a county road, so we,
okay.
It would go through us, so.
All right, pretty much it.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Now, anyone else? I'm gonna make sure I see the hands, because I didn't see yours, a little bit, I'm a little short and can't see all that. I'm gonna say somebody else did, right? All right, well, that being said, now we'll close the public commentary, so bring this to executive session, gentlemen, I have a need for executive session, if y'all are willing to do it.
I get it.
So I'll make a motion to go into executive session, ask for a second.
I'll say.
All in favor? Hey, Jamie? Did you turn it back on, or you get it?
Oh.
All right, so, gentlemen, I'll make a motion to come out of executive session, back to the regular meeting, I'll make the motion, ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
While in executive session, we discussed real estate with no action taken, being said, I'll make a motion to adjourn and ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.